So they aren't whole, they're fractured, they're fragmented. And it's really meant to be somewhat of a commentary on kind of the state of affairs in the United States right now.
In response, there's this installation, a wall, not like the one in Mexico, but something more similar to a children's playhouse with small holes to talk through any differences between Republicans and Democrats, pro lifers and pro choicers, Lakers fans and Clippers fans too.
We can laugh about it, and this would be a good place to do it.
Yeah, definitely, and I think, I mean, the colors that she chose are very intentional, right? They're very playful.
Thirty-three exhibits are on display. Be sure to vote for your favorite while here. The Made in L.A. exhibit is free. Now, as visually interesting as these art pieces are, there's absolutely nothing like being here in person to experience them. The exhibit runs through September 2nd at the Hammer Museum. I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
The Made in L.A. exhibit comes around just once every two years. Be sure to catch it before it's gone in early September. You can keep up with all the Hammer's events at hammer.ucla.edu. Thinking about heading to the theater this weekend? If you have a mind for the macabre, there's an offering just for you at the historic Pico House.
So if you step over here...
It's showtime! And here at the supposedly haunted Pico House, a different type of immersive play is about to take shape.
From the moment you walk into this space, you're given a cloak. You are part of the performance, so you're almost getting more bang for your buck.
Tonight's presentation, "The Assassination of Edgar Allan Poe."
It's a little bit spooky. It deals in the life and times of the author Edgar Allan Poe, and it's set here in the Pico House, which was built about 20 years after he died.
Since this is completely immersive theater, be prepared to follow the characters, the story, and the plot throughout the entire building.
Having the audience walk around instead of just on a set stage makes everything so much more live and real, and that's always the goal of live theater.
Moves up and down, and so the levels are amazing to play in. I'm fortunate to work with a great group of actors and a great group of directors.
One of the coolest aspects is that there are multiple versions of the play, and every night is a new experience.
So the audience gets to choose, do I follow this person, do I follow that person? But they won't see all of the scenes in the play when they come see it. They'll need to come another time.
So make sure you check out as many versions of the play as you can. It runs now through August 26th. After that, never more. Okay, sorry, I couldn't help myself. I'm Seth Hancock for L.A. This Week.
The Downtown Repertory Theater presents the play for free, but encourages audience donations. For showtimes, visit downtownrep.com. This week, we join Councilmember Joe Busciano for the opening of two new supportive housing units in the South Bay. These units are part of L.A.'s mission to provide housing options for the formerly homeless. Seth Hancock reports.
Homelessness is a rising issue across America, but Los Angeles is creating permanent solutions by building supportive housing.
The project that you see before you is a template for other projects to follow in the city of Los Angeles. Each council member has committed to 222 supportive housing units throughout the city of Los Angeles. For me, this is 160 of those 222 units, but I feel that we need to do a lot more in the city of Los Angeles to address the housing issue. This housing project is another reminder that we need housing at all income levels, from market rate to affordable, to formerly homeless individuals, and this is what makes the city of Los Angeles going to thrive and address the homelessness issue as well.
To new tenants Carla and Lawrence McHugh, this supportive housing could not have come at a better time.
The supportive housing is very helpful. I wish I would've had it while I was working, because then, you know, it would've been much easier for us. I could still be working, you know? But to be homeless and work and have my husband's health problems, it was a little bit too much for me, and it was unfair to him. We could've lived like normal human beings again.
And isn't it remarkable how a new home can provide a fresh outlook on life?
I am so happy, in tears. This is a blessing. I am so grateful for this opportunity. I'm going to make the best of it. I can't even use them words. So happy. I had a home now. I have a home again.
We love you, we bless you, and just know you're not alone. You will have services here on site every single day, so you do not go back out there and live on the sidewalks in your cars. God bless you, we thank you, we thank Metahousing, your case managers who are here, thank you for not giving up!
As Councilmember Busciano mentioned, each district has committed to 222 housing units of this type. Did you make it to a local block party with LAPD officers this week? Tuesday marked the 35th Annual National Night Out, where community members and law enforcement came together to make our neighborhoods safer. Anna Marcos has more from Silver Lake.
It was a fitting song for a night in which residents were busy taking back their streets. The 35th Annual National Night Out kicked off in neighborhoods all over the country, and Silver Lake was no different.
You know that there are 38 million people in 16,000 communities who tonight are saying, "Who's streets? Our streets." And these are our streets in our community.
The night is meant to make neighborhoods safer and to foster better relations with police. Officers come face-to-face with residents and kids in a positive block party atmosphere.
National Night Out, this is when America takes a moment to enjoy America.
We go every year, we love it. The kids have a great time, and they get to meet the police and the firemen.
My whole street, we're just are really active in the community, and I love living in Silver Lake, and I love this event.
A who's who list of the city's top brass was on hand to spend time with community members as residents recover from a recent shooting tragedy at the local Trader Joe's, in which a store manager was killed by a shooter.
It really has helped define who we are as a community in Silver Lake. We care about one another.
To see them out here shaking hands makes me feel as if they care about the people that are here.
And it gives officers, again, an opportunity to get out of their cars, break bread oftentimes, and it can be just, you know, a little local barbecue.
Local barbecue, or guacamole fest, or cookie fest. It was a good time for all, what with petting zoos, and magic tricks, and, oh my, even a little chicken hypnosis. Just another national night out with residents putting a dent in crime by having a whole lot of fun. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
This year's National Night Out had an estimated 38 million attendees in over 16,000 communities across the country. Spend all day trying multitudes of ice cream? Yes, please. Project Runway has nothing on these fashion icons, and you might as well be walking on the sun as you relive the '90s with iconic bands Smash Mouth. All this and this week's things to do. Looking for a sweet way to beat this summer heat? Head on down to Ice Cream Alley, a recurring event inside Smorgasbord, L.A. Ice Cream Alley features the best of L.A. ice cream, from the traditional to wild new interpretations you're guaranteed to love. Admission is free. Ice Cream Alley takes place every Sunday through September 2nd at the Alameda Produce Market in downtown L.A. From the stunning classic Vogue magazine covers through the era of Instagram, you don't want to miss this amazing Icons of Style Fashion Photography Exhibition at the Getty Center. Spanning a full century of photographs and material, the exhibition shows how the magazine cover as an art form has truly become a cultural force. The exhibition runs through October 21st at the Getty Center, 1,200 Getty Center Drive in Los Angeles. Admission is free. Dance back into the '90s with Smash Mouth. The iconic MTV era band is playing a free show as part of the Pershing Square Summer Concert Series. With hits like Walking on the Sun and All Star, Smash Mouth is forever ingrained as part of fun '90s culture. Opening the show are the Spin Doctors. So head on down to Pershing Square Saturday, August 18th for this really fun, free event. And that's a look at some things to do.
Let's get to wobbling.
Wobbling? Yep, these so-called wobble pieces are the stuff of kids' play fantasies. At least, that's what city leaders are counting on as they install the new adaptable play space at the Watts Alma Reeves Woods Branch Library, and the kids seem to be warming up to the wobble trend.
You never stop needing to play, to find a new friend, to get healthy, to just have some fun. It's part of what it means to be a human being.
Even Mayor Eric Garcetti tries on a wobble for size, and it seems a good fit. The playtime outside the library can definitely spark kids' imaginations, and city leaders hope so will the books and reading inside the library.
When all of you come to the library to wobble, and I know you will be wobbling this summer, be sure, be sure to explore and discover all of the amazing things there are to do at the Los Angeles Public Library. We are about access, we are about opportunity, empowerment, innovation, and lifelong learning.
To have a place to play here at the library, not only can y'all do your homework here now, but y'all can take a break in between homework, you know, have a little playtime, do your homework, invite friends, and all that good stuff.
Many here believe healthy kids with lots of opportunities help create a healthy community with its own opportunities.
I think it's nice, it's about time they started to bring some stuff to the hood. Bring stuff to the minorities, bring stuff to the community, put back into our community.
We're committed, we love this area. I grew up here, still here, and want to say to you, just know that we're here to make Watts the best that it can be. Have fun, and let's play.
And play these kids do.
I like swimming, basketball, football, bubbles.
Yep, there is bubbles to be had, too. Some of the kids actually do make it into the library. One of them ends up getting a library card with the help of Mayor Garcetti, who, it turns out, is pretty good at storytime.
They pulled the enormous turnip right out of the ground. I know you guys have been wanting to see the turnip. It came, it came out.
It seems new worlds are already opening up for some of the kids, whether it's through books, through bubbles, or just good old playtime. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
Finally, we'll close out this week's show with a look at how the L.A. Dodgers Foundation is helping to build 50 dream fields for L.A.'s young sluggers. Anna Marcos reports.
It's a true field of dreams for kids to play ball, and not just little kids, big kids, too. Mayor Eric Garcetti threw the first pitch himself. This newly spruced-up Little League baseball field has opened in Bishop Canyon, a joint effort by the city and the L.A. Dodgers Foundation to build 50 so-called dream fields for children to play in. Javier Pavan came all the way from the valley with his mother to see it.
This field? Oh, this field, I think it's pretty big compared to other fields. Hopefully, I get a chance to play here. I really wish I do.
One, two, three.
The Northeast L.A. Little League, fresh off their successful spring baseball season, now has this new field to celebrate as well.
We got inspired by the Dodgers Stadium down below, so we, we actually, you know, did the whole site. So it's got new irrigation, new turf, new soil, fencing. We put some dugouts, some pitching mounds, some batting cages.
Bishop Canyon is a very special project. We like to say that all of our Dodgers' dream fields have a very special place, but to be in the backyard of Dodger Stadium...
One coach says the field is a win for the entire community.
They can see how nice the field is, they can see, you know, how clean it is, and they can see the coaching, the kids, the parenting, how, you know, the baseball brings the community together.
It's hard to imagine it now, looking out at the new fencing and the trees and the T-ball field, but take it from me, this field needed some real, real work. So we rolled up our sleeves and we got busy. We wanted to make sure that all of you had a safe place to swing a bat.
And swing a bat, they do. These boys and girls are also apparently pros at throwing, catching, sliding into home runs, and stealing bases. Did anyone steal a base this season? Nice! This Field of Dreams is now open for business. All that's left to do is play ball. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
That's going to do it for this edition. I'm Amayma Rashida. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityv.org. You can also check out our newest social media feature, L.A. This Minute, on YouTube. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
Good morning, good morning everyone. Want to welcome you to City Hall. Mr. Spindler, please sit down. Your last warning. I want to welcome you to City Hall. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. The public is welcome. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you please call a roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonin, Busciano, Sidio, Englander, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, Ofero, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson. Ten members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Bloomingfield moves. Ofero seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Rue moves. Price seconds. That brings us where?
That brings council to items one through seventeen, and those are items for which public hearing have been held.
Okay, Mr. -- go ahead, Chair.
Committee reports for fifteen and sixteen have been submitted, circulated for council's consideration. And also, for the record, Mr. President, there are technical corrections on item four. The case number should be five-four-five-seven-one-one. Item five, the address, should be two-one-zero-three South Harcourt Avenue. Item six, case number, should be five-seven-seven-four-seventy. Item eight, the address is nine-five-one-zero North Van Nuys Boulevard, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Ofero.
President, calling item eleven special for Mr. Corretts.
Let's hold item eleven. Let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, continue.
Items number fifteen, eighteen through twenty-four are items for which public hearing have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration, sir.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, Mr. President. There are cards on all items. Eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and...
Okay.
Twenty-four. One last thing, sir. Mr. President, there is a request for item seventeen to go forth with, sir.
Without objection, so ordered. That brings us where?
That brings council to items called special, general public comment, or presentation, sir.
Okay, Mr. Herman? Mr. Herman, please come forward. You have items, this is regular. You have items eighteen, twenty-four.
Yachty, yachty, yachty! Events of the Yachty Festival by one and only the fool cop Joe Busciano. Let's give El Grito for Mommy, Mommy, Mommy Rodriguez for her donations. General service of sixty-nine thousand dollars for El Grito, Grito, Grito! Hora le wees! Then we go to the historical place, LA Boyle Heights, El Sereno Lincoln Heights. Hora le putos! Puro Weezer, homies! But the fool's not in his seat to recognize a historical resource, which is I. I, niggas, am the resource of LA. A historical event taking place through September thirtieth, twenty-nineteen. Mr. Fable, are you listening? Stop bushing him with that man. Set up a grant so that thirty-six thousand dollars of nigger money can be established in nigger appropriations to nigger accounts for niggers and city planning grants. That's my profession, is to nigger rap on the grant, bro. Submit a grant, reimbursement, request to the state office, historical preservation, to deposit grant reception. Oh, that's, sorry, that's Justin's reception. In the city of planning grants, trust fund, forty-six, he all why? You know why? Because I'm black. Then I go to the final parcel maps, and I agree Rue the Rapist should have final map saved with the North Koreans taking over my homeless camp. Then my final subjection for the motion, fuck Joe Busciano on item twenty.
Thank you. Let's give him his...
So fellow guests, taxpayers, all you Angelinos, Wayne Spindler has a TRO that was placed against him simply because he was exercising First Amendment. But yet, some plantation nigger put a TRO by Judge Carol Goodson and won't remove it. Welcome, mommy, welcome. Here comes mommy pro temp. She's late, but she's here. To no respect to me or you, I'm not the fool who's late for two-hundred-thousand K a year. Look at Marquisie, he's going bald. He got to keep shaving and waxing that gel on all day long. Jose Weezer's at the bar because his son is retarded, just like me, myself and I, yo.
Stay on the subject.
So, as I said, this is general public comment.
No, but you have to...
Forty-two USC, nineteen-eighty-three, exercising the Fourth Amendment and the Fourteenth Amendment under the First Amendment.
Mr. Herman, you were not within the subject manager's section of the city.
Okay, Mr. Spindler. Mr. Herman, your time's expired. Mr. Spindler? Mr. Spindler, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, one, two, three, and four.
Sign up for everything, fool. Every goddamn item. That's right. So let's see here. We've been switching the lineup here, and it's like the Dodgers is fucking everything up, man. So...
Get on topic.
That's right. So let's see here. Number eighteen. Fuck number eighteen. It's not high enough. The minimum wage should be eighteen dollars an hour. You can't live on no fifteen, fourteen, thirteen, twelve dollars an hour. You gotta have an eighteen-dollar minimum wage. Thank you, Janice Han. She agrees it should be twenty dollars an hour, but we'll take eighteen dollars an hour. I'm tired of working at Walmart. Good afternoon, sir. Good afternoon, sir. I want twenty dollars an hour to do that shit. I ain't doing it no more. I'll come live here. Number nineteen. What is this? We gonna lease out the Tom Bradley Uncle Tom Room on August the twentieth for a bunch of Uncle Toms for goddamn eight hours at night? What you gonna be doing in City Hall, four-thirty to eight PM at night on a Monday? You gonna be paying off these people, that's what it is. That's what you do here in this building when we all asleep, taking kids to school. You stealing the money. Four-thirty to eight o'clock? You gonna be paying off these council members, especially that Rodriguez. Mommy, mommy! Yes, mommy? No, mommy? Number fifteen, District Number Twenty, a fleet week list. What does that mean? Well, we got ships. We gonna go out in the ships. Captain Busciano here, sir. Yes, sir. We're gonna take the fleet out into the LA River. That's right. We're gonna be boating. If Joe Busciano can drive a boat, I'm a goat. I guess he can do it. Okay, I'm a goat. Then we get to El Grito. Este es el grito. Normalmente, yo dijo mucho cosas ah, esto grito. Pero, yo tengo una pas de señor Sidio. Una gran pas de señor Sidio. Si no, yo dijo que señora Monica is puta, pero no! Yo sostengo mi oporio por el grito. No más de dinero. Dinero is si in, mil dólares, no sesenta nove.
Let's give him his one minute for general.
Why are we here? Why does Paul Krikorian not have a valid bar license and was suspended from the practice of law three times? Because on Friday, he fucking not sitting in his chair, that one reason. The other reason is, I was at a meeting, and they broke the quorum. And then they threw me out because I said so at my public comment. And then that ballhead over there, he calls himself Marquisie Dildo Harris. We call him El Grito in the barrio. Sits there and says, shut his microphone off. Well, you violated the Brown Act. That's Mr. Fable over there. Bro, that suit ain't working for you, bro. That suit look like shit.
Stay on the topic.
So finally, Mr. Wesson, stop making white babies. Stop making white babies.
Thank you. Your time is expired. Your time is expired. Mr. -- I saw Mr. Previn. Are you still here? Please come forward. Okay, Mr. Previn, eighteen through twenty-four, and then twenty-seven. Can he do twenty-seven now, or is that... No. Mr. Previn, I'll call you later on twenty-seven. So anything but twenty-seven.
Thank you, sir. I'll just try to say it. Item number nineteen, sir, is the Neighborhood Council item. And I wanted to remind the council once again that never is the appropriate time for a moratorium on reform. And I think David Rue stands for reform. We all do, especially with the Neighborhood Councils who've given him a committee to look at that. This is a little meeting up in the room.
Mr. President, I don't see how this relates to...
Well, it's a meeting, sir, of the Neighborhood Council.
...the room, which is what the agenda item is about.
Okay, just veer back, Mr. Previn.
No, no, but I'm gonna explain how it's relevant. It's a meeting of that group in City Hall. It's on the agenda, and they're going to discuss lots of things.
Go ahead, Mr. Previn.
I wanna finish, sir. I'm talking on the item.
No, I'm saying, okay, go on.
I am going on. Two people on each Neighborhood Council are invited to this meeting. We don't know who's invited from our particular neighborhood. Someone is, and that's the way it works. It's a nice little gathering, and at that gathering, they're going to discuss the possibility of waiving the moratorium on reform. Because reform means change. And I think it was Mr. Bonin, and Mr. Krikorian, and certainly Mr. Corretts, many others have been thinking about an online voting protocol that's being rolled out for ten exclusive Neighborhood Councils who opt in to have their data possibly breached. Maybe not. We had that problem in Studio C, but we would like to participate. The only problem is that these groups are gonna be voting in mid-late nineteen, twenty-nineteen, sort of June, May, and yet, they won't allow us to adjust the bylaws to get what I thought Bonin articulately pointed out. The problem is stakeholders. Who are the stakeholders? Because there were many funny stories about how they were able to bring in, you know, a group took over an entire Neighborhood Council in some district, got what they wanted, and then quit routinely, and then the old, you know, slobs came back. It's good stuff, sir, but we want to make sure that the Neighborhood Councils at the local level where David Rue started out can adjust, because we've, you know, it's been multiple years when some of these Neighborhood Councils, and they can't get in because Holly Wolcott needs a long lead time. Now, we appreciate, everybody needs a little lead time, but the question we have to ask ourselves, does she really need nine months? And can't she give one and a half months, for example, Fable, to change the bylaws, make some changes, tighten it up, so that we can move forward with an empowerment program that's worthy of all the business trips advertising it around the country and the world that Grace and Holly are doing? We appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Now, the citywide special events, there's no shortage of funding being rolled out. Everybody remembers July third, the day of a hundred and sixty items, where Corretts and Avak cleverly arranged for a plus fourteen thousand for Jewish Heritage Foundation, finally, because, you know, after years of heritage recognition of all types, this is for El Grito for five grand. Mazel tov. Everybody loves El Grito. This is Mexican independence. We want to celebrate that. But why move sixty-two thousand in for just a five-thousand-dollar grant? You guys gotta be a little careful. That's, again, probably Avak down at the CLA shuffling and bobbing and weaving. And incidentally, Taste of Soul is coming up, sir. And there's one where we've worried a little bit about, frankly, the public funding for what is a for-profit day.
Let's give him his one minute for general public.
Right. Thank you, sir. This is gonna be a very cogent, short remark on campaign finance and Section 471 of the Public Matching Fund Program. The Ethics Commission will be discussing it Tuesday morning. Those who know anything about it or are interested should go. They're proposing increasing the match to six to one. It's a terrible idea. We have to kill the threshold, and this is the proposal. I can explain it in writing later. All of the five hundred signatures that are gathered in district for a candidate who is qualified should count as a ten-dollar contribution. That's five thousand total. And then whatever match we agree on, five, three, six to one, that automatically enter the program. So a brand-new candidate who got five hundred good signatures certified by the clerk, which is a high bar, very high bar, doesn't have to dick around, if you'll pardon the French, with a hundred signatures, and they do that, and they get automatically, let's say, fifteen, and if it goes into the matching program, they could be a little more. But they're still not gonna touch Weezer, who's the one banking two-hundred-and-fifty, and Marquis taking a hundred grand, and Rue getting a hundred grand. All those people are still gonna win.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Thank you. So, Madam Clerk and City Attorney, that closes the multi-comment section on today's agenda. I want to quickly move into general public comment, if I could get those. Jacqueline Richardson. Mickey Jackson, please come forward. John Cosgrove. Ms. Jackson, go ahead.
Mickey Jackson, Healthy Housing Foundation. I'm very concerned because I was over at Parker Center a couple of days ago where we were having a press conference to announce a lawsuit and to, again, beg the City Council, the mayor, to use this for homeless housing for a third, your own figures, a third of the cost of your own figures for building a new building. But you're already in there demolishing. Channel Four took pictures of someone inside the building with a sledgehammer smashing the marble. So I think that's kind of bad faith to go ahead and try to do as much damage as possible inside that building, and I hope you'll reconsider, and I hope you'll think about priorities, luxury offices or homeless people. Luxury offices or homelessness.
So if I can get Ms. Richardson, and John Cosgrove, and Ben Resnick. Please, if Mr. Resnick and Cosgrove would make their way. Yes, Ms. Richardson?
This is going to be kind of short, mainly because I don't know too much about the subject. I'm not sure either whether or not it's within your jurisdiction, or if you ever saw the comment. It's very short. There was a request to have additional spaces going to the freeways using additional spaces. I don't want to say any more than that. That's it.
Mr. Resnick, if you're next.
Good morning, Ben Resnick, members of the council. I thought I'd speak in public comment on this meeting since my item is not until the next meeting, and since we won't get a chance to talk to you about the item in Playa del Rey. I just noticed on the board there's posted new motions with twenty-one pages of new findings that just magically appeared this morning. This is the project, and, you know, the bigger question is this. Is the coastal zone exempt from really having to provide its share of fair housing, or its share of housing? And if you look at the material, and hopefully you will, and you look at what's going on with this project, you will notice that it's very easy to come up with reasons and excuses to deny a housing that includes affordable units under sort of character of the neighborhood, doesn't fit the character. I'm not sure what the character here is, whether it's buildings or people, but it's ridiculous that you would consider applying a thirty-six-year-old policy that has long been superseded with ordinances that allow this project.
Thank you. Mr. Cosgrove?
I am going to be very brief, but I am a longtime resident of Playa del Rey. Moved in there while I was still a student at Loyola University in nineteen fifty-eight. We took over the then-abandoned fraternity house on the beach, and the fraternity, as a result of that, my personal intervention, that was a residence for twenty years, abandoning in the seventies. I care about Playa del Rey. I moved in as a graduate to my house in Playa del Rey, Earldom Avenue, and I've been there ever since. The thing that strikes me as a longtime resident and a caring resident, because I'm down there every day, is that virtually nothing has happened in fifty-plus years.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cosgrove. Okay, Madam Clerk, Mr. City Attorney, that concludes a general public comment and multi, so we will close that out. I'd like to ask Ms. Martinez.
Mr. Wesson?
Thank you, thank you.
I heard you have a friend with you? Oh, wow, he's cute.
I'm gonna have, in fact, hold on for a second. Let me button my jacket. My wife might be watching. I'm gonna have, in a few minutes, a few seconds, more than just one friend up here with me. So, Arlene, thank you. She's one of our great volunteers with animal services. But I'm gonna ask you to do me a small favor. I'm gonna ask you to sit right here, because I'm gonna... Mr. Herman, one more sound for Mr. Herman, okay?
Mr. Herman, this is your last warning. I'm gonna ask you to leave. Keep interrupting this meeting.
What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna ask you to sit down, because I have another assistant that I'm gonna ask to come up and help me. And this assistant also has a group of individuals with her today, so if you would sit close, just in case. This is Casey, by the way, guys, just in case Casey gets crazy. But I think my new assistant is well-schooled in how to handle dogs. So today, folks, is not only my favorite day in Pet Adoption Friday, but we're also going to say thank you and good luck in the future to a pillar of the city family who's been with us for, I think, a little over thirty-three years. So, Marita Aspen, come on up and bring the crew. Yeah, you can sit. No, no. No, don't. I'm gonna have Marita. Now, where's the rest of the CAO crew at? Ladies and gentlemen, I just found out that Marita, a young lady that I've known since two thousand and four, or two thousand and five, loves dogs more than I do.
Well, I don't know about that.
So, no, that's what I was told by all of your staff, and that it would be very appropriate to have her stand with me today as we try to find a home for two-year-old Casey. Casey came from Mr. Harris Dawson's region. He was a stray. He is a just pretty calm dog and a kisser, and really, really looking for a home. So if you need a companion animal, somebody that will give you unconditional love, I think that Casey would be the perfect addition to your family. So, most of the dogs that we get adopted in, at this Pet Adoption Friday, are adopted from people that work for the city, or individuals that are in the council chambers, or people in other offices that are watching us on television. So, we're gonna keep Casey around for a minute. Know that we have a one-hundred percent adoption rate. I'm gonna ask Arlene to stay for a bit. If you are interested in this mixed Chihuahua, I believe, that is approximately two years old, that will give you unconditional love, please come down, get a hug, get a feel, and I think you'll really want to take this fella home. So, Arlene, we're gonna move... Maybe you can kind of show Casey off a little bit? All right. All right. So, back in, I believe, nineteen eighty-four or nineteen eighty-five, Marita here began working with the city of Los Angeles, working for LAPD. She worked for LAPD for several years, and it just seemed like every eight months to a year, it was one promotion after another promotion after another promotion. And let me just say, for those of you that may not have been afforded the opportunity to work with her as closely as I have, she is, bar none, the best. She is good at what she does. But there are some more personal things that I think we need to know about her. Now, she is, my understanding, was born in Finland, speaks Finnish. I don't know why that's important, but somebody told me.
Somebody wrote it down.
Somebody said I should say that. Now, and she speaks Finnish, but when she worked for Mayor Antonio Villarogosa, he called her Marita. So, he turned her from Finnish to Spanish, is my understanding. Our former CAO, Miguel Santana, noticed the talent and the ability, and he put her in charge of our labor relations, labor negotiations. And she's tough, but she really is fair. It's my understanding that what she wants to do, her and her partner Debbie, is Debbie? I thought I saw Debbie of over twenty years. Let's give Debbie a round of applause. I sure hope you didn't bring home some of our labor problems to poor Debbie. But Debbie is a retired city staff herself. But it's my understanding that they're going to get in a giant RV and drive all around the nation with their two dogs, Clu and Abby, correct?
Yep.
And what Mr. Santana told me, that he would not be surprised if by the time you make your way back to LA, that you might have picked up another dog, or two, because she is, in fact, a dog lover. It's funny, through the years, the fire department always accused her of being partial to the police department, and then the police department says she was tougher on them because she came from the police department. So, I guess in some respects, it's a no-win situation. But let me say this to you members without pause: She is one of the most highly respected staff members that we've ever had in the city of Los Angeles. She's known as the den mother to the CAO's office. She keeps a jar of candy, and everybody comes into her office and gets candy. And if some of you wondered why the CAO's office gets tested every sixty-day, they get their glucose levels tested, is to make sure that Marita hasn't given anybody diabetes. But another thing I do want to say, because I got some of the information from Dana, too: We're fortunate that in the city of Los Angeles, we do our very best to build a strong bench, a strong group of individuals, because life goes on, people move on, they do other things. And I think because of the work with Marita and the training given to Dana by Marita, she's gonna step in, and she's going to do a very, very, very good job. I called Matt Zabel with the mayor's office, and I said, "Matt, what can you tell me about And all he said was "tough," about fifty-eight times tough. And I said, "Can you tell me something funny?" He said, "Other than being afraid of her?" And I have nothing else to say. But anyway, ladies and gentlemen, to devote thirty-three years of your life to the city of Los Angeles, I think is a great gift. The people that come to work for us, they come because somewhere within their heart and in their soul, they are public servants, and they want to help. We are proud to say thank you for your service, and we wish you the best as you move into the next chapter of your life, to Marita Aspen. Let's give her a round of applause. In fact, I'm gonna ask you to speak first, and then we'll give you your resolution. Let's give it up. Marita.
Oh, my, it was my pleasure. You will be missed. You're a good one. You're a keeper. We're gonna let you speak first.
Well, thank you. That was very overwhelming. I did not expect that. You know, when I walked into Parker Center in March of nineteen eighty-five, I had no clue that I would still be here after thirty-three years. But here I am. It has been just a blast at LAPD and the CAO's office. I enjoyed working with those of you who are very closely on the EERC, Mr. Carrats, Mr. Corian, Mr. Englander, and of course, Council President Wesson. It has truly been an honor, and this is a great place to work, and thank you so much. Just, I hope to see you in the future. Thanks.
All right. Share.
All right, here we go.
All right, here we go.
One more round of applause for a career well done.
Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and take up item number one. Having an announcement?
Uh-oh, alert, breaking news. We have a new mom, and your name is?
Paula Jerez.
And Paula has adopted, in the process of adopting Casey.
And Mr. Wesson, I think you now have a perfect adoption record, right?
Yeah, it's still one-hundred percent. Thank you.
Congratulations to the new mom.
Thank you.
I love you. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and take up item number one. Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and vote on reconsideration on item one.
Okay.
Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
That item is now before us. Let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote on items eighteen through twenty-one. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Let's now go ahead and vote on items twenty-three through twenty-four. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
There is a substitute motion on item twenty-two. Has that been circulated?
Yes, Madam President. It's been posted, circulated, and is now before council.
Okay, great. Let's go ahead and vote on that item. Let's open the roll.
Ms., Madam President, there must be a vote to substitute prior, first?
That's what I'm opening the roll for.
Yes, ma'am.
And vote on substitution. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
That vote is not, item is now before us. Let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Why don't we go ahead and momentarily adjourn our regular meeting and move on to our special
Bloomingfield, Bonin, Buscaino, Sidi, Englander, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Carrats, Corian, Martinez, Ofero, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson, thirteen members, and a quorum, Madam President. Items twenty-five and twenty-six are items for which public hearing have been held. Movements and findings have been submitted, posted, and circulated for these two items, and is now before council.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and take up these two items together, and I, like you reminded us, we have satisfied public comment on these two items, and I know there's people who have signed up to speak, but I was reminded that these two items, we've already completed our public comment portion for them. So, go ahead, Mr. Bonin. You want to go ahead and speak?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you to those from both sides of this issue who've come down here today, and thank you to both sides of, those from both sides of this issue who came down here for the extensive and thorough and incredibly lengthy, late into the day Plum Committee meeting where the public hearing was held the other day. This is a contentious issue in my district, colleagues, and so I'd like to take a few moments to explain it. There are two separate items here, and they are two separate issues. One is about whether or not to grant the community's appeal of a tentative tract map for this project, and the other is whether or not to accept the community's appeal of a recommendation for coastal development permit for this project. Let me first discuss the issues of the map. This project is seeking, from the public, from the city, and from us, that we add and merge into their parcel a ten-foot-wide strip of land along Culver Boulevard, a variable width strip of land along Trolley Place, in excess of the twenty-feet-wide alley right-of-way, the twenty-foot-wide and variable width public right-of-way on Vista Del Mar Lane, and the five-foot-wide strip of land along Vista Del Mar. The city has no obligation to grant existing right-of-way, in fact, has the responsibility, I feel, to consider potential public benefit of those rights of way, and there are several, whether it is travel lanes for commuter traffic, whether it is a potential dog run, whether it is the imperative we have to provide coastal access, to make things safer for pedestrians or cyclists, to provide beach parking, or parklet, or even bioswells could be done in this area. And I might say, colleagues, that this area, Culver Boulevard and Vista Del Mar, that area, is one where, for good or bad, I have learned over the past year, the public has very, very strong opinions about how the public right-of-way is used on Culver Boulevard. So, it is not a piece of land that we should be sacrificing quickly. As for the question of the coastal development permit, Mr. Buscaino is the only one here who has any of the coastal area in his jurisdiction, so I should explain that what we're being asked here to do is whether or not to grant a coastal development permit. And that requires us to determine whether or not a project meets the standards of the California Coastal Act. Now, how do you do that? In this case, we look to the Del Rey Lagoon specific plan and the guidance of the California Coastal Commission. The California Coastal Commission and the city worked for a number of years on the specific plan. The coastal commission gave final approval. The city worked on it, and then, without taking a separate vote on final approval, enshrined it into the Westchester Playa del Rey Community Plan. And matters such as this, the Del Rey Lagoon specific plan is the standard that the community plan calls out, and it is the standard that the California Coastal Commission and the city have repeatedly referred to as the appropriate standard to measure projects. And this, by those standards, is in conflict with the Coastal Act in terms of height, in terms of scale, and in terms of character. And there are plenty of findings to make that point, and plenty of public testimony to make that point. I would remind us that our, that the Coastal Act, and finding whether a project meets the Coastal Act, is not our option. It is our obligation. The standard we are required to meet is determining whether or not this meets the provisions of the Coastal Act, and it does not. And just to underscore that point, the Coastal Act in Section 30151 of the Public Resource Code states that "The scenic and visual qualities of coastal areas shall be considered and protected as a resource of public importance. Permitted development shall be cited and designed to be visually compatible with the surrounding areas." Now, those are the two issues, the tract map and the CDP, and our findings on these are strong, and they are clear, and they are quite detailed. This issue, the applicant and some of his representatives have tried to cloud this issue. They've tried to cloud it in various different ways. They have said that this is about density bonuses. As the city attorney pointed out in response to Mr. Englander's question in Plum earlier this week, it is not about density bonuses. But even if it were, we have completely solid ground to stand on, because the court's determined, in the Canal Gardens case just a couple of years ago here in Los Angeles, that the California Coastal Act is the primary document, the one that governs and supersedes other state laws. The applicant and his representatives have said that this is an issue about affordable housing, and this is about me and my constituents opposing affordable housing. It is the first time I have actually been accused of being an opponent of affordable housing. In fact, I've, as you know, taken some knocks for supporting a lot of affordable housing. This is, in fact, luxury housing. This is luxury housing, and this project, by seeking all of the public rights away, seeks to actually not add more units, but build bigger, richer units with better views. There are a few affordable units that have been attached, but as I noted at committee the other day, calling this an affordable housing project is like a restaurant advertising a steak dinner as vegan because it comes with a side of broccoli. The applicant and representatives have said that, "Oh, we shouldn't be abiding by these rules because they're old. They're old rules, and they're not sufficient to where we stand today." Well, the fact of the matter is, they are the rules today. And we have an option, right now, to update those, because the Planning Department has just launched the community plan update in this area, and that is the appropriate venue to actually change the rules. Saying that we do not need to abide by the rules because they're old is not an appropriate legal standard. I also want to note that the applicant and representatives have accused constituents of being nimby's and opposing all development. I gotta say, this should have been the easiest development in the world to get approved. This is a vacant parcel near the beach that the community has been clamoring for something on for a very, very long time. People still say, "I would like to see something there." And it could have been done had the applicant actually approached the community with sensitivity. Instead, the applicant did not listen to the community, the applicant insulted the community, and the applicant continued to seek more and more in excess and in violation of the rules. This is an example of something that we see in our planning process way too often, where the developer comes in and makes an ask, and assumes that it is a divine right, and that it is not our option whether to grant it, it is our obligation, and it is not. This is a case that has given people, it has fed the perception in the city of Los Angeles, that the point of the rules, the point of the system is to bend the rules to suit the developer, and the developer needs to be bending to suit the rules. As I said, there's been a lot about bad about this process, but there's also been a lot that has been very, very good. The community has come together. I want to thank Kathy Schwertfeger, and Julie Ross, and Sarah Kay, and so many others for their work. They've been joined in their stance on this with the Neighborhood Council of Westchester Playa, with the LAX Coastal Area Chamber of Commerce as well, with coastal advocates, with renters, with homeowners. And as I noted, those are groups that do not easily and often come together on an issue, particularly regarding development in this community. So, while this case is actually clear-cut in terms of the map, in terms of the coastal development permit, there's been a lot wrong with the dialogue, and people have lost faith in the process. We have an opportunity today to restore faith in that process, and to show people that the system does work, and the city works for them and not for the developers, and the city looks out for the common good, and the city insists... And the city looks out for the common good and the city insists that we actually follow the rules. So colleagues, I would ask then that we, uh, approve the substitute motions, twenty-five A and twenty-six A, uh, granting the appeals of the constituents of the CDP and of the tract map, uh, and denying this project. And I ask for your full support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. Members, um... Can we please stop clapping so we can get to voting? Thank you. Let's go ahead and vote on these two items as amended, items twenty-five and twenty-six. Let's open the row. Close the row. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Thank you. Let's move on to, I'm sorry, Mr. Bonin, did you want anything else?
Fourth with, please.
Fourth with on id, both items, sir?
Yes, please.
Yes, on items twenty-five and twenty-six for Mr. Bonin. Mr. Sadio, you have a special, special presentation? Or introduction, I should say?
Members, as you know, there are, um, a lot of issues that confront our nation with respect to immigration. The president has exploited people's fears and created this incredible dystopian view of us being under attack. And so, um, now is an opportunity for us to address the reality. The reality is that every day people work hard. Immigrants come here to do their job, to do jobs other people don't do and to add to, uh, our great nation, to realize our greatest hopes and aspirations. On the other side of that are, there are people who are deported, who should be and who are, uh, every single day. And there are receiving nations who are clamoring to address, uh, how they receive those deportees. We have with us today an incredible delegation of thoughtful, uh... Very thoughtful and, and very, um, interested leaders from the country of San Salvador who look to us to guide them in terms of addressing how we deal with at-risk youth. And so we have this incredible delegation. They're visiting Grid, they're visiting Homeboy Industries, uh, they're, uh, here at our Summer Night Lights at Normandy and Venice and they're here with the social enterprise model. And so it is an incredible, uh, honor for us to introduce, and I'm going to name them all because they've come a long way and they deserve this recognition. Uh, and so it's very important for us to acknowledge their efforts to look at what we're doing to address at-risk youth here and what they can do to ensure when at-risk youth are deported that there's a process for them to be reintegrated into their society. We have with us, um, bueno, quiero decir es un gran honor que estar aquí con todos ustedes. Este es el salón de la ciudad. Quiero decir gracias a parte del presidente del, del, uh, el Consilio, el, uh, presidente Herb Wesson y también, este, mi colega, que están aquí Nuri, Martinez y de todos de nosotros. Quiero presentar, let me present, uh, the mayor of the city of San Salvador, which is its capital, Ernesto Muchot. See? Muchot? Claro. Quiero presentar, let me present Carlo Aguilar from San Salvador. Benjamin Sestoni, also from San Salvador. Señor? The mayor from Soyapango, who is Juan Pablo Alvaraz. Juan Pablo. The mayor of Colón, Guillermo Guevara. ¿Dónde está Guillermo? ¿Atrás? See? Este, el, uh, mayor of the Ciudad de Delgado, Elmer Cardosa. ¿Dónde está Elmer? You can see we have the League of Cities here represented from San Salvador. Rodrigo Avilán is a member of Congress. Don Rodrigo. Abel Tobal, he's the chief of police for the city of Colón. Right there. Also, uh, the advisor to the National Congress is Alan Balmore del Sid. And also from San Salvador, we have Guillermo Gallegos. And then from what's called civil society, there, there, uh, nonprofits, there are NGOs, um, and other, uh, er sectors, we have Pastor Juan Carlos Hasban. He's a member of the National Sec- Security Committee. No, ¿no está? ¿See? Ah, atrás. Jaime Zablán is from, uh, Proyecto de Fatoria Ciudadanía and a member of the National Security Committee. And finally, we move to Marcela Samora, who is making a documentary. She's a filmmaker. Karen Janeth Duarte, who's from the USA Crime and Violence Prevention Project. Karen. Akira Griswold from Proyecto USA Crime and Violence Prevention Project. And then finally, Ana Rosa Silva, USA from El Salvador. We wanna welcome them as they come here and work with us to make sure that this cycle of, uh, young men and women who are being deported and returning ends and that these, uh, young, uh, men and women, uh, are reintegrated into society. Uh, the city of San Salvador has been part of our sister-city network since oh-five and we wanna continue to work with them and let them see our efforts, uh, here in the city and also with our nonprofits doing their great work that they do. Thank you and bienvenidos y muchísimas gracias.
Thank you very much for that introduction. Bienvenidos, adios. Thank you, Mr. Sadio. We have another, we have one more item on, um, our special agenda, item number twenty-seven.
Madam President, item twenty-seven is an item for which public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, let's go ahead and, um, vote on reconsideration. Let's open the row. Close the row and tabulate the vote. Before we vote on this item, we do have three speakers.
Thirteen eyes. It's thirteen eyes.
Thank you. We've had three speakers on, on our tablet, Mr. Previn. Mr. Spindler and Mr. Herman.
Thank you. It's Eric Previn from, uh, Studio City and it's nice to have a big crowd this morning. And, uh, this is about bonds and really, uh, we're looking at, uh, levying taxes and setting tax rates for several interest and sinking funds for the bonded indebtedness of the city for 2018-19. This is what municipalities do, uh, and it looks, it looks okay. There's something called lease revenue bonds and I would ask this body to take a good, long look at the Miraloma Detention Facility that's being planned right now. AECOM, Mr. Bonin, and other groups are working to propose, doing something that is abhorrent, unthinkable, and a terrible idea, which is to deport women from South Los Angeles to jail in Lancaster where they're vulnerable to something called valley fever. So we don't wanna go into debt. That's gonna be a hundred million dollars from the state and we've asked the Governor Brown, and there's a lot of ac- activity now among organizations who are figuring out that the proposers, the contractors are getting ready to submit their bids to do this terrible crime. So we'd appreciate you taking a lead, Norrie Martinez, because you are a fighter for women and we don't want people to be jailed.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Your time is up. Thank you very much. Mr. Spindler, you're next. Mr. Spindler? Followed by Armando Herman.
Okay, mommy. Thank you, mommy. Yes, we would've talked to my mommy, Norrie, on item twenty-seven. That we wanna pick and put bonded indebtedness. We don't like bonded indebtedness because it turns us into slaves. Whenever we put bonded indebtedness, we become a slave and they put a chain around our fucking necks and choke us with interest rates. So we don't want to tax any more fucking people for any more of this fucking stealing shit. We don't want any more bonded indebtedness. What we want to do is, "Free the slaves, yo! Free the slaves! Stop fucking borrowing money you don't have! Look at Herb Wesson! Look what he did! You cannot keep borrowing and borrowing!"
This has nothing to do with the item, Mr. Spindler. Get back to item twenty-seven.
You're goddamn right. It applies, mommy. He's stealing!
You're done. Thank you very much. You're not on the, you're not on topic. Can you please stop the clock? You're done. Armando Herman, you're the next speaker.
So mommy, we're, we're talking about stinky funds for the bonded indebtedness of the ci- ci- city physically in 2018-19, Mr. Fable? And the taxes suck! Stinky fable, Streffan. We're talking about the analyst report, a financialo, financialo report, you see? When, when you borrow money from working people and you abuse the discretion of how money is spent, taxes like that moron up there can't be spent equally adjusted in our community and puts us in a negative deficit. It's the same as when a ceiling falls and collapses because you can't levy what you borrow from. See, I know about Herman, Jason Wesson failed to pay his two fucking mortgages and he's a sto-
And again, we're, we're off-topic now, Madam President.
You're done, Mr. Spindler. You're done, Mr. Herman. Let's go ahead and vote on this item, item number twenty-seven. Let's open the row. Close the row and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, there's been a request to send this item forthwith. Madam Clerk, um, let's go ahead and adjourn our special meeting and return to our regular meeting. And Mr. Harris Dawson has a special introduction. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you so much, uh, Madam Chair, uh, for allowing me to make a very, very special presentation. I wanna ask the, um, students of the TLC program at Loyola Marymount University to stand up so you can see them. These are first-year, uh, African-American students at Loyola Marymount University. Uh, they are all a part of the learning community where folks come together, not only to make sure each, we all get through college and we get the best scores that we possibly can and that, um, that, that we fulfill our dreams, but also that we build relationships, we learn about community, we learn about, uh, the government, we get involved in the neighborhoods around, uh, Los Angeles. And so all of these students that you see here are first-year, uh, students at Loyola Marymount University. Sometimes, no one in this room, but sometimes there are departments or, or, or businesses that say there are no African-Americans, we can't find enough African-American young people to fill our vacancies and to, to work on our projects. And so I want everybody to see here, uh, that this is the next generation of folks coming along. We're very proud of them and we're counting on you to help build Los Angeles to be the kind of city that we all deserve. So thank you all so much for being here and thank you for being a part of our city.
Thank you, Mr. Harris Dawson, and welcome to Alli City Council. Okay, we have one more item left, item number eleven. Mr. Bonin, did you call that special? I'm sorry, Mr. Coretts.
Thank you, Madam President. We've all been receiving, uh, calls from landlords who are concerned about this, uh, piece of legislation. So I thought I would clarify what its intent is, regardless of what people have been saying about it. I, I think it's fair to say that we all receive calls from desperate constituents who are either facing harassment, uh, or evictions, uh, by their landlords and don't know where to turn for help or information. And we have a high number of new homeless. We did better this year at dealing with, uh, solving our problem with the chronically homeless, but, uh, those that we placed were almost entirely replaced by new homeless. And that is happening partly because there are unjustified evictions that are taking place and there's a much higher, uh, uh, rate of eviction among those that are not able to afford legal representation. It's the same thing that we've seen with, uh, the immigrants that the Trump administration has gone after. When they have attorneys, they have something like five times the success rate. What we're not trying to do with this is to give legal representation to everyone that's facing eviction. Uh, those who don't need it and those who don't deserve it are not individuals that we're looking to provide free representation for, nor would we ever have the resources. So if someone's not paying their rent, uh, this is not going to protect them. But if someone, um, is being evicted because they violated their landlord's, um, no pet policy by having a small bowl with a goldfish in it, and we know that's just a, a stretch to find an excuse, that's the type of situation where, um, we would look to, uh, help provide this. People on all sides of this issue have been making suggestions on how to go forward with it. And I would have to say that this is really not the end. This is the very beginning. Um, we will continue to work with stakeholders to determine exactly what kinds of cases and what kinds of organizations could be funded to handle it. Um, we've had some very preliminary conversations with the mayor. And, uh, I, I am certain this will not be abused, but it will be used to keep some people off the street. As you know, with the many years of Costa Hawkins in place, if, uh, someone is paying a reasonable rent, once they're out of that unit, that unit will in all likelihood never be reasonable again. And the person paying eight hundred dollars, uh, will leave and the person paying three thousand dollars for the same unit will, will replace them. Um, and so, uh, this is, this is just one step to stop creating new homeless in the city of Los Angeles and give us a chance to, uh, get a handle on the problem. And I ask, needless to say, for your eye votes.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts. That now, item is now before us. Let's open the row. Or did you have something to add, Mr. Buscaino?
Thank you, Madam President. Oh, I just wanna, um, rise and, and thank Mr. Coretts for, uh, leading this effort here. And I, I support moving this forward and see how the, the ordinance will be crafted before it comes back. Um, I do know that in my district there, uh, are a number of property owners, landlords, who also live in disadvantaged communities, uh, who are senior citizens, who don't have the wherewithal to have legal, legal representation. So when we talk about legal representation, um, I'd like to also call for some equity for both property owners as well as tenants. So I'm supportive of moving this forward and looking forward to, uh, seeing the, uh, the ordinance come back to us. Thank you.
Go ahead and vote on this item. Let's open the row. Close the row and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, what else is, what's, what's before us?
Counsel has motions for posting a referral.
Posted, uh, posted and referred. Um, members, are there any announcements? The desk is clear, right, Ms., Madam Clerk?
Yes, Madam President.
Okay, let's go ahead. Um, if there aren't any announcements, can we please rise for adjourned motions? Members of the public, out of respect, can we ask you to rise as well? Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. Today, I ask colleagues that we adjourn in memory of Charlotte Bedard. I'm joined today by her daughter, Charlene, and Valerie, her son Jerry, and her granddaughter, Abby. Charlotte was born on March fifth, nineteen thirty-two, in Pelham, New Hampshire, and passed away in her home on July fourteenth, twenty eighteen, in Santa Clarita. She married the love of her life, Donald Bedard, in nineteen fifty-one and became a mother shortly thereafter. Donald and Charlotte dreamed of an, of adventure and decided to pack up their station wagon with everything they owned to begin a cross-country journey to California. Charlotte was an active member of her community and in nineteen eighty-eight, she co-founded Silmar Graffiti Busters with Hannah Dyke, an organization which is instrumental in my district still today. She was passionate about community beautification and was instrumental in the passage of a city and county ordinance that requires businesses to lock up spray paint, spray paint cans to prevent graffiti. In nineteen ninety-three, she was the first member appointed to the newly-formed Foothill Police Advisory Board. She devoted endless hours to get the community involved with the local police department. She was also a member of the Silmar's Women's, Silmar Women's Club, Silmar Chamber of Commerce, and the Questers Antique Collectors Club, numerous other civic associations. Charlotte is survived by her five children, Dawn, Jerry, Charlene, Valerie, and Keith, along with nineteen grandchildren and six great-grandchildren. Services and a celebration will be held on August twenty-fifth at Our Lady of Perpetual Health Church with a reception immediately following at the Belcaro Grove House in Valencia. May she rest in peace.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Any other adjourned motions to my right? Señor, Mr. Kakkorian?
Thank you very much, uh, Madam President. I'd ask that we adjourn this meeting of the city council in memory of Craig Turner, a constituent of the- constituent of the Second District, who was the eldest son of Tina Turner. Craig Turner died aged 59. He was born on August 20, 1958, to Tina Turner, who was then known as Anna Mae Bullock when she was 18, and Raymond Hill, who was a saxophonist for the Kings of Rhythm, the backing band for Ike Turner. Craig went on, in his own right, to become a successful real estate agent working for Rodeo Realty in Beverly Hills, and he is survived by his mother and his half-brother, Ronald. May Craig Turner rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Kocorian. Any other adjourned motions, Mr. Weston?
Yes, members. I rise today to adjourn, accompanied by Mr. Harris-Dawson and Mr. Price, in the memory of the Queen of Soul. One of the most powerful singers that this country has ever known. Born in Detroit, Michigan, daughter of a pastor of a Baptist church, and I grew up Baptist, so I've heard a lot of good singing. She was just an unbelievable talent. I want to say that she recorded, recorded, or there were charted more than 112 records, sold over 80 million in records, received numerous awards and honors, and I don't think I ever met anyone that ever said anything negative about her. For those of you that used to serve in the legislature, Mr. Sadio and Mr. Corretts in particular, I don't know if Mr. Kocorian was still there at the time, or Mr. Bloomingfield, we used to have an end-of-the-session bash. And the end-of-the-session bash, the members of the legislature would perform for, God, 1,000 folk. It was a big fundraiser that we used to do. And we had a ball with it, but I will never forget, and it's funny, yesterday, the first call I made when I heard about her passing was to former Senator Martha Ascutia. Because at the end-of-the-session bash, the one performance I think that no one will ever forget is when Senator Ascutia imitated Aretha Franklin with several other female members of the legislature singing "Respect." It was such a hit that we called him back to do an encore. So we, we lost a legend, but for so many of us, our lives are brighter and fuller because of the music that she made, and that's why she will forever be the Queen of Soul.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. And thank you for, Mr. Weston, for bringing this adjourned motion forward. There are a few artists and few icons that we have the privilege of watching and enjoying during our lifetimes that transcend their individual category and come to represent many things to many people. And Aretha Franklin both has done this as an individual but also performer. The great Otis Redding, who wrote and first recorded the song "Respect," is quoted as saying when he heard the demo of Aretha Franklin singing "Respect," he said, "She stole my song, and I will never, ever get it back." Because he was making a song about a personal relationship between a man and a woman, and Aretha Franklin took that song and made it a song about women's rights, she made it a song about civil rights, she made it a song about human rights, and how to treat each other during a relationship. And very few people can strike that chord with so many of us across so many spectrums. I'm, I also note her role here in Los Angeles. Detroit is great, and Detroit has Motown, but her greatest album, Amazing Grace, her greatest album, the famous one that you see in all the pictures, was recorded right here in Los Angeles on 43rd and Crenshaw, on Mr. Weston's side of the street, side of Crenshaw right there. But in our city, that backup choir was everyday people from churches in our, in our community and our neighborhoods right here in Los Angeles. And so we embrace her, we're proud of her, and I'm happy to join in this adjourned motion, celebrating the gift of Aretha Franklin to Los Angeles and to the world.
And if, and if we could have three signatures on that, Mr. Harris-Dawson, Price, and myself.
We would do. Any other adjourned motions? Seeing that our meeting is adjourned, have a great weekend.